You prohibit wireless service without a general ban. You don't need a blanket ban to be, to run afoul of federal law. And there's a two-part test the court impose or uses to analyze if you are effectively prohibiting wireless service. And that is, are you preventing a carrier from filling a significant gap in coverage by the least intrusive means? So the first part of that test is, is there a significant gap in coverage? Now, the courts are not extremely helpful, especially the Ninth Circuit, on what that means. They haven't imposed a bright line rule. They call it a fact-intensive inquiry, which makes it difficult. It's kind of maybe court by court. But it does mean more than dead spots, is what they have given us guidance on. And they will look at, the court has looked at factors like public, what the impact on public safety, the numbers of customers or potential customers affected, and what is the effect of that, of effect to their service. Second part of that test is, are they proposing to fill this gap with the least intrusive means? And that requires the carrier to have compared alternative sites, and then choose the least intrusive means to fill that significant gap. Now, Crown Castle will explain to you how they meet that two-part test in their presentation. So where do we go from here? Franchise agreements. Now franchise agreements are a tool under state law that state law uses to let municipalities regulate or license their public right-of-way. So staff has, staff recommends that we use a franchise agreement to move forward on small cell deployment on the island. Franchise agreements are great tools because in the agreement, it's a basically contract. We can set out terms to receive fair compensation for use of the right-of-way. We can ensure that we balance the public benefit from this new technology with the compatibilities in neighborhoods and what we, and what we need as a community. We can consolidate, to consolidate utility and communications facilities, which is also a goal of our comprehensive policy, and then we can regulate the size and the aesthetics. So, oops, that's a backup slide. That concludes my presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Crown Castle at this time.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Okay. Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Dan Schweitzer. I'm the Government Relations Director for Crown Castle, and seated to my left is Jason Sears. Jason is our Implementation District Manager for this specific market of the Northwest. So any sort of construction-related questions would probably be filled in by Jason. Anything about policy or law I can try to handle. And we've prepared some slides to kind of take you through what our proposal is. So first things first, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come in front of you. We really, we really appreciate it. I think this is a perfect setting for us to kind of talk about what we would like to do. The other is, I would like to thank city staff. They've been really helpful and patient with us and have worked to get us to this point, worked with us quite well. So that's really appreciated. And then before we talk about the franchise agreement and the nuts and bolts of entering into a franchise agreement, I kind of wanted to take a step back. And so what exactly is Crown Castle? Or what is it that we do? And what we do is we connect people. You know, we ensure that the customers of the wireless carriers are getting the services that we're paying for, and we allow people to enjoy those services in their everyday lives as well as run their businesses. And there's a huge safety component. And we're going to talk about some of the more of the specifics as we get into the, as we get into the agreement or the presentation. So I covered some of this, but what Crown Castle does is that we own builds, we maintain these fiber-fed distributed network systems or these small cell antennas. So some of you may be familiar with Crown Castle. It's a large publicly traded company. There's, there's a tower side of the business and a small cell side of the business. The tower side, we have over 40,000 towers, largest provider of wireless infrastructure in the country. And then about five, six years ago, seven years ago, we got really interested in the small cell space as the next evolution for the infrastructure for wireless technology. You can see that we're regulated by the Washington Utilities Transportation. We're regulated in 46 of the 50 states through the various public utilities commissions. We are the largest single provider of small cells. And it's important to note, we're not new at this. We've been doing it as long or longer than anyone, and we've done it with more success. We have more than 17,000, or 18,000 of these small cells on throughout the country as well as 17,000 miles of fiber. We are a competitive local exchange carrier, which goes to the regulation by the state. And it's our carrier customers. So we don't have end-use customers. The user is not our customer, it's the carrier. So that's kind of the landscape. And just to talk about this, as I indicated earlier, for about 15 years, we've been building these small cell networks. You can see the numbers are going towards wireless. And now, a full 50% almost of all households rely on wireless only. You're seeing more commonly that people aren't, aren't having landlines come to the home. And I would suspect that number for millennials and people younger than me is even higher. So as a way of example, my son is 20 years old. I can't imagine him ever actually calling the phone company and getting them to come out and turn his phone on. So this is sort of the direction that we're going. You can see the video is projected to be 75% of, you know, the wireless network traffic by 2020. And this one is, it's important to highlight that almost three-quarters of all E911 calls are made through wireless devices. So that's an enormous safety component. So what are the benefits to Mercer Island? You know, there's an enhanced service. Mercer Island represents what, you know, in the industry might be described as difficult to deploy because of the topography of the island, the way that it's designed, the trees, the hills, et cetera. So, you know, years ago, you could park a macro site a few miles out of town. You could have enough capacity and coverage so that everyone that was able to communicate with that macro site via their cellphone could, could have voice communications. Increasingly, that's, that's just not the way that the industry's going, and it frankly doesn't work any longer. What we need is a small, you know, project size or a small cell antenna that's closer to the user. And the analogy is sort of like a, you know, a wireless router in your home. And most of us have wireless routers in our home. It doesn't work if it was two to three houses down. So you need the signal that's going to be closer to transmit the data that you need. The reason why small cells are ideal, you know, in this circumstance is because it represents a smaller project size. You can maximize the use of existing poles when it's technically feasible. And that's, the application that we have in front of the city does use existing Puget Sound Energy poles. So it prevents or slows down the proliferation of poles within the public way, which is important. And then when you come to the characteristics of the installation itself, you know, they're small and easy to install. The network is scalable. And what I mean by that is, this is a co-locatable fiber-fed system. As the demand grows, the fiber is really what provides all the backhaul services for these technologies. So the nodes tend to get a lot of the attention, but the fiber is really sort of the rock star of this, of this network. And then it's co-locatable, which is interesting. And it also reduces the amount of new verticality introduced into the city's right-of-way. Some more benefits. So improved network performance with less intrusive wireless infrastructure. The alternative is to place large macro-style antennas, which aren't really compatible with the characteristics of Mercer Island, particularly in residential areas. So this is a system or a network that would be considered much more compatible with the residential areas. And as far as health and safety, you know, the FCC is the one that regulates the amount of energy. And I can say that the antennas that we operate operate many times below the FCC minimum. And these installations don't interfere with other devices. They're de-conflicted because they're operating on different frequencies. And I covered a lot. Is there any questions about anything I've covered to this point? Happy to have a conversation after the slide presentation is concluded as well, if you want. So if I can just keep going, if you like.
Keep going.
Okay. So one of the, one of the examples of a network that we have in the city of Seattle, this is the Alki area of Seattle. On the left, you'll see a Verizon installation, two-foot panel antennas at the top, and there's a little, there's some equipment shroud on the pole. This would be a pretty typical small cell installation for a single carrier. On the right is a Sprint node, I believe, slightly different sized equipment box. You can see two two-foot panel antennas that are sticking just above the light arm. But this would be, I would say, pretty representative of what a small cell looks like on a wood utility pole. And the one that we're proposing would look a lot like this.
So just so we're fully clear, can you point to everything that's yours on that?
Yes.
So we understand exactly what we're talking about.
These are your two-foot antennas at the top. This is your equipment shroud right here. This is pretty much the extent of the site from a, from a visual perspective.
And that tanish tube going up near the poles, is that yours as well?
I don't know.
That's a bit of coaxial cable.
Yeah. So that is for ours as well?
Yes.
But it, I mean, it looks to me to be at least three inches in diameter, maybe? And so it's not a coaxial cable. It's, it's a lot more than that.
So what it is, is PVC conduit. You're right, three inch, three inches in diameter. We run our half-inch coax through that to feed the antenna. So the signal is passed through that coaxial cable.
Okay. Thank you.
And then on the right, two-foot panels here. Here's the riser or the conduit for the coaxial, and here's the equipment.
Okay.
Where does the fiber optic then go?
So we'll have two choices with fiber optic. Either it goes aerially and it feeds the site aerially, or in circumstances where the fiber is undergrounded or the underground district and the, we'll go on the ground.
So that, one of those lines midway up the pole is a fiber optic line?
Right, here.
Yeah. So on the right, the fiber's coming from the aerial feed, and the node on the left is actually coming from underground. That's why you see the conduit below.
So it is actually, is the fiber, I'm sorry, I just started saying it's a fiber optic, because it looks like it's the phone line in the middle and the power lines all the way on top. So the fiber optic, is it, is that a new set of lines or is that, it's hard to see. It looks like there's multiple lines there.
Yes, there's multiple lines. We share space, what's commonly known as the communication space. It's below the power space. So there can, there can be several fiber optic and copper lines within that communication space.
And so when you were talking about co-locating, does if, if you do something for T-Mobile and then Verizon comes in, can they share your fiber optic or you have to put in a separate fiber optic for, for Verizon?
Now, that's a good question. The fiber optics are shared. There's, we usually run a 144-count fiber, sometimes a 288-count. I believe that we've specked out 288 strands of fiber for Mercer Island.
And so that just, the co-locating, what would be, I assume though, these two are both just single uses, I think you said they're just.
That's correct.
If you're co-locating, what would be added to each of those, visually what would change?
So Seattle City Light prefers to install antennas below primary and not above the pole. That's, that's their preference. So what that does is that limits the type of antenna that we can install. The antenna on the right is below primary. It's a two-foot antenna. That just fits in the communication space. By the NESC standards, we have to maintain 40 inches of clearance from primary. That's for workers' safety. So we have just enough space to put in a two-foot antenna. So that actually makes a single carrier application in the city of Seattle. That is their preference. We're allowed approximately eight cubic feet of equipment space in the comm space, and that's where you see the, the two different types of equipment. And they prefer that we just use the same fiber, but use the next pole over for the second tenant. So what we're seeing here is, we have 100 nodes in the city of Seattle. 50 of them are with Sprint, and 50 of them are with Verizon, basically next pole over.
Just to put a finer point on that, Councilmember Ross, I've got a photograph later in the presentation that shows a similar utility pole setup with two carriers. And that'll go, and we'll talk about kind of policy drivers for the city of whether that's the preferred route, is a fewer larger sites or more smaller sites. But there's a, there's an example for them in the presentation.
I think, for me, granted, we'll probably get into a broader discussion toward the end of this. I think where, at least I'm hearing us head, and one of the points that I'm concerned with is, ultimately, once you put one of these small cells on the tower, what does that open up? To what extent are we just really creating the first step? And what becomes a proliferation of, let's just call it stuff, on a pole that becomes potentially increasingly taller, et cetera? So there's, you know, I don't want to belittle it in the terms of aesthetics, but I think there certainly is some stress in the community about that. And what we need to see is not what one box looks like, but what it looks like it built out.
And we can get to that lower in the, in the presentation. So, you know, why are we here? And it's really the demand that's creating this new type of service. Prior to the application, we did what's called a drive test of the city or the island of Mercer Island. I'm not a radio frequency engineer, but essentially red is not, is not great. Red are opportunities for communication carriers to upgrade their, their existing coverage. For this is the LTE 700 megahertz band, which is where carriers are deploying with LTE, would represent pretty poor coverage overall. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, that doesn't track with what's on page five of the Agenda Bill. What, there seems to be, that area that's in red is not, that's L-line, there's significant gaps in coverage. It looks like, in fact, the green areas are, East of the First Hill, it looks like it's the green area that's supposed to have a gap in coverage. Maybe I'm misreading something.
And your question is, are the north of the?
No, I just.
This graphic is, this graphic is page eight of your Agenda Bill, Exhibit 2.
Right. And I'm looking at the chart on page five, which identifies significant gaps in coverage. And for example, the Northwest area is First Hill, which is, you know, where David, where three of us live. And so that green area up on the upper-left corner, but that's, you said that the bad places are red, even though what's, it just seems to be, I don't understand how this all fits together.
I think Dan will explain it. Dan Schweitzer in subsequent slides showing different drive test results. You've got more slides, right?
I do. And I'll show you how it sort of all integrates and then what we're proposing. Will that be helpful?
Sure. I guess I'm just trying to understand.
Okay.
How this works.
Yeah. And this is the 1900 megahertz 3G. And you see there's, there's a different, it looks differently, but the areas that we're trying to serve with this application are primarily along the west side of the island. So you see there's still significant areas of gap in coverage along the west side. And this is the LTE 2100 megahertz. Again, it kind of tells the story that the, the coverage is not that robust. And UMTS 2100 megahertz is sort of a mixed bag, but there's, there's plenty of red, there's plenty of opportunities to fill the significant gap. And as I'd mentioned before, it's, it's not necessarily like the old days where you weren't having four or five bars and weren't able to make a phone call. What you see now is really an issue of capacity. And so you see the area on the left is kind of the old days where one macro site would be sufficient to serve all the customers. And you see these customers here with the spinning wheel, which is what you experience when you don't have a, a data connection that's reliable and strong. And so, you know, what Crown Castle does is, in addition to the macro site that you see in the picture on the right, you see a rooftop, you know, on the left, you see a rooftop unit, which is not uncommon. And then you also see a small cell integrated in this instance into a streetlight. And this is providing the capacity and the throughput for people to use the data services on their phone. This is a very quick, so it's not, you know, the question is whether small cells are going to take the place of towers? And the answer is no, they're not. They're intended to augment and put pinpoint coverage where the towers can't necessarily reach, or where the capacity demands outstrip the tower's ability to provide the data throughput. So, you know, towers are tall and visually prominent. They tend to be high-powered, which would be not, not be necessarily compatible for a residential neighborhood. They're, they're not always ideal for data because they're low to the customer. Density population. The small cells discreet lower to the ground, as we just discovered. You know, each node is low-powered and get the, the antenna closer to the user for the better data throughput, typically within the public way, although not exclusively. So as an example, in addition to doing right-of-way sites, Crown Castle also builds many small cells on college campuses across the country. Stanford is one of the largest, you know, customers of Crown Castle, with robust networks in Philadelphia, Princeton, New Jersey. You know, there are a lot of examples of venues like football stadiums and places where there's high-capacity demands.
So just, I don't understand megahertz at all, but just, does, do you require one small cell covers all four of these frequencies? Or does it, do you need a one separate cell for each frequency?
You don't, you can answer.
That's a good question. So the carriers are licensed for specific frequencies. Each frequency would have its own amplifier. The amplifiers are usually low-power and they're aggregated in one box. So Verizon, for example, would install a 700 megahertz amplifier, and sometimes 850, 1900, 2100. So they would have four amplifiers in one box. From, from an aesthetic standpoint, it looks exactly the same. You wouldn't notice a difference. But it depends on what kind of technologies they want to deploy.
So one antenna then supports multiple frequencies?
Yes. The antennas have both high and low frequency ports. So they're usually anywhere from six to eight ports per antenna.
Is the box that you've shown on the other slides, is that a standard size? Or is that, can you have a smaller box? Or is that pretty much what you get?
It's pretty much standard. Yeah.
And the dimensions are about, you said two feet? Is that?
There's a slide, we have a slide.
Okay. We have a slide coming up.
Yeah. Next one. Yeah. And you can go back, just quickly, no, next one. So.
You know, what is a small?
So, basically, you have the end antenna, whether it be on a, a streetlight, a standalone pole, or a wood utility pole. And there's fiber-fed into some sort of common hub where the, it's, you know, it's processed as a call, and then gets distributed, you know, from there. But essentially, there's a central hub feeding fiber out to multiple nodes, and then it creates a common network.
Dave, did you have a question? Okay.
So as Jason had mentioned earlier, there's two, essentially, when it comes to PSC, there's two different ways to put the antennas. This is a pole-top solution. So here you have two-foot panels that sit above primary. And I'll point those out. They're kind of pointing out with the arrows. Here's your two-foot panel antennas that sit above primary. And here's the equipment that's mounted on the pole. You know, this would be considered a pole-top solution. Next slide. And this would be one that's in the comm space, as Jason alluded to, below primary power. Here you have two-foot panel flush-mounted to the pole, painted to match, equipment on the pole. And you can see that they're essentially accomplishing a similar thing. There are some, there's things to think about, whether pole-top or comm space makes sense. And also, there are regulations, as Jason alluded to, that we have to work within, certain clearances that have to be maintained for safety. We can't put our equipment, you know, anywhere on the pole that we would like. So there are some limitations and restrictions about which solution works for each pole. And, you know, we have to work within those restrictions. And Councilmember Wong, this goes to your question here. The proposed equipment two-foot panel, and this is the quad-band radio, 52 inches by 12 and a half by 11, with a small 60-m power disconnect. Go ahead.
Quad-band radio, that's the, that's that box in the middle of the pole? Or that's, those are antennas?
That's correct.
The antennas on the left, the quad-band radio is actually the box?
Yes.
Which looks more square in the other pictures, but, but this is, this is that type?
Yeah. This would be considered the equipment mounted on the pole. These are the antennas.
Okay.
And this goes to your other question, Councilmember. What does a multi-tenant look like, two tenants look like on the same pole? And this is, this is what it looks like. You have a single box, as Jason alluded to, but you do have two different sets of antennas feeding different customers. So this goes to the question about, you know, larger, fewer sites, or smaller, more sites. And it's, it's a policy question. I've seen jurisdictions go either way. It just really depends on what, you know, is the preferred route.
And this is an actual site in Bellevue, in Newport Hills. It's been in service since 2007.
So the question is, what are we planning, you know, for, for city of Mercer Island? On the northern side, these might be just a little bit hard to see, but you can see each of these flags represents the proposed locations for the small cells.
Yeah, they're hard to see. It's the green, yeah, they're green dots.
Yeah.
I think is what I'm looking at. Okay.
Along west Mercer, that's what that's supposed to show?
Primarily here.
Page, page seven shows.
Yeah. And it's not a coincidence that the, the drive test maps that we showed you where the areas that need to be filled in are the areas that are being targeted.
And I guess I'm trying to correlate sites to applications. So 38 sites altogether that you're trying to place on Mercer Island?
That's correct.
All right. And you lease the, you're essentially leasing the pole from PSC. Is that correct?
We have a license.
You have a license. And does that, is that an exclusive license? So no other, and I realize you're not a carrier, but carrier or carriers representative could utilize those same poles?
Yeah. It likely wouldn't work. It would be technically infeasible, so another carrier couldn't come and license the same pole space that we've occupied.
Okay. So, and you all represent which carriers currently?
All of the carriers. This application is T-Mobile, but we do work with all of the carriers.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if AT&amp;T said, we want to be on Mercer Island and have some of that same coverage, they wouldn't be able to utilize these same 38?
The likelihood would be to go when the next pole over would be the stronger likelihood, utilizing the same fiber-optic cabling.
So you can, you can locate two carriers on one pole is the maximum?
Like, I mean, you, we can do more. There's a difference between versus building our own. We've built standalone poles that are just Crown-owned poles that can house multiple tenants, more than two. But if we're going to attach to a wooden pole, two's probably, two's probably the maximum.
It really depends on the frequencies that the carriers want to deploy. And nowadays, because of the, the demand for capacity, is there's, they're usually deploying as many frequencies as they have license in a market. But sometimes they roll them out slowly.
And just quickly, so this is T-Mobile, you said. And so Councilmember Oweezan Tyner says, AT&amp;T comes along and wants to do something. Are they likely to just come to you and say, you've already got the infrastructure at our facility? Or are they likely to say, eh, that Crown Castle group, we don't like them at all, we're doing our own? Or something else? What, what's, what's, I know this is sort of vague stuff.
Yeah.
But I'm just trying to get a sense of what the likely peripheral. the likely proliferation is here of different carriers doing their own thing.
Yeah, and to your first question, I would hope the former versus the latter. Once we have an established network with a path, I think the most important thing for carriers is to be able to deploy their networks, you know, timely and cost-effectively. So we would hope that they would utilize our services. There's, there's nothing that would prevent AT&amp;T from coming in trying to, I suppose, you know, invent their own process, although I think ours is the better one in this circumstance.
Our franchise agreements with Crown Castle, it's not with T-Mobile. So basically, if, once you have the franchise agreement, it definitely puts you in a, in a better position vis-à-vis other carriers, I would assume.
But there's nothing exclusive about that, right?
No, it's not exclusive. If, if the city maintains the same position, you would then require the next person else to get a franchise agreement. And so we have to go through that whole process.
It would be exclusive to these 38 locations.
Well, I mean, that's part of the question for Christina is, what is, is a franchise agreement going to cover every right-of-way in the city so that, basically, that's, that what we're approving here today or being asked to approve at some point in the future would be a franchise agreement that would cover literally every right-of-way in the city?
Not necessarily. I always see direction that you can give us guidance on. I've seen franchise agreements that are different. Some are very specific to sites. So a franchise agreement could be structured for 38 sites only, and then requiring an amendment, which would come before council, to add any additional sites. But I've seen that in some cities. I've seen wider lessons, like Councilmember Graus just mentioned, where it is a, it is a wider lesson, maybe expecting there to be additional deployment. So that is something we'd ask for guidance on from council.
So when we're approving 38, are we approving the location? Or are we just saying you can, you get 38 and you can put them wherever you want? What, is there any, elaborating on Councilmember Graus's point, does the city have any control over then where those 38 go?
Yes. So one way I've seen it, and I would recommend, is having an exhibit that, similar to what you see in the agenda bill, like specifying the location of the 38 nodes. So that can be part of the, like, your license is to, for example, have these 38 sites as depicted on this map in this location. And so you're specifying actual locations within the franchise agreement.
But that would mean that every time they want to add another site, they got to come back to the council or to the city to get approval of that other site? Or how is that going to work?
There is one way to structure it where you would require at least, you know, basically a contract amendment, a franchise agreements amendment, if you were going to limit it to that 38. I mean, of course, there are advantages and disadvantages to that approach. You would have to bring amendments back for council approval. But that is a, that is some policy guidance we are seeking from council tonight. If, if it's, if you want to limit it to these 38 sites as applied for, that's one way we can structure it. If not, if you want to have some flexibility and less time before you for amendments, that's another way we can structure it.
Crown Castle's getting a headache right now.
So, yeah, but I think, I think this is important, maybe it's unfortunate they have to sit through this, but at least they're understanding the questions. So, we could say 38, but we don't necessarily have to approve these 38. To what extent do we have to approve these specific locations as identified here? I mean, okay, let's say that I don't like where number five is, for whatever reason. It's near a something. Do we have the ability to negotiate the specific locations for those sites? Or do we just provide, here's where you can put them?
I'm going to ask them to weigh in on this.
Yeah, to the extent that there's a particularly controversial site, if there's a better alternative that still meets the RF requirements for the site, then we will certainly entertain it.
Okay, onward?
Yes, and actually, this, no, it's okay, I got it. So just kind of summarizing what we've already talked about, you know, we're asking to enter the right-of-way of the city of Mercer Island for a franchise agreement. You know, there's no reason for me to sort of rehash over everything that we've discussed. But initially, we're here because of T-Mobile. There's an initial application in front of the city. And, you know, we'd like to get a franchise agreement so that when additional carriers, if any, are interested, then there's a more streamlined path and a more predictable and reliable path for future deployments.
That's it.
Yep. And pending any questions, I'm happy to entertain any and all questions.
Dan, can you just explain, I mean, assuming the franchise agreement is approved and you guys are going to go forward, mostly, is it going to be basically trenched? You have to dig into the right-of-way? Is that the way you plan to do it? Or, I think you've also mentioned that alternatively you could do it airborne. So I guess, what's the, what's the plan, I guess?
Yeah, the plan...
What kind of, what can the public expect by way of intrusion and just inconvenience and what have you?
And that's a really good question, Councilmember Wong. And the plan currently for this application is approximately 11 miles of fiber. Just over 10 are going to be aerial, and just under 1 are going to be underground. And the method on the underground would be boring, not trenching, which is, if anyone's not familiar with it, is least impactful, less impactful than trenching for sure. That's the current plan for this application.
One quick question regarding underground. We have a few neighborhoods that have expressed and interested in bringing their utilities underground. So you've got a pole and that neighborhood goes underground with their utilities somehow, magically. What happens to that site? How do you, how do you deal with that?
Yeah, that's a good question, something we face often. To the extent that the undergrounding's approved, we'll participate in it with the other utilities. If it's an antenna site, then that might be something that we have to come back and talk about, a suitable alternative. So that, unfortunately, the one aspect of our network that can't be underground is the antenna. So, but to the extent that all utilities participate, we will participate. And that type of language can be built into the franchise agreement, and we see it fairly commonly.
Yeah. I understand.
So I would hope, Christina and Crown Castle, that the franchise agreement would be quite specific on the size of the antennas, the size of the boxes, just the, I mean, we, because you spent a lot of time tonight showing us how unobtrusive these are, and I would want to make sure that the agreement captures what you represented to the council in terms of dimensions, so there's no, there's no, we don't end up selling the community something that turns out wasn't what actually is delivered. The second thing, I hope the franchise agreement will be very clear on trees, and that these will be located in ways that do not result in trees having to be impacted in the city right-of-way. So, that's my, me personally speaking, but I would be looking for some very strong tree protection language. I have no idea where, how these could impact it, but I know that that's a challenge already, particularly like on First Hill, where the lines are up around in the tree area. And I would hate to see this as a reason why, you know, trees got taken down or topped off or severely trimmed.
That's it. There's a reference in the agenda bill on compensation, and I'm just not sure, obviously that would be something that's discussed in a franchise agreement, but what are the parameters? What are we looking at in terms of compensation, I guess? I mean, that's a, I don't know. Christina, do you have an idea?
Well, federal law doesn't, like, in cable franchises, for example, they impose a 5% maximum of gross revenues. There's not such similar cap in federal law for wireless. However, it has to be fair and reasonable, is the general guidelines. So I've looked at franchise agreements who, that have 5% gross revenue on a yearly, yearly franchise fee and then a per-pole, a per-pole fee. So those are options we're, that we've seen in other franchise agreements, which we will be looking at going forward, and part of the agreement going forward.
Anything else? Okay. Go ahead.
Christina had said she needs guidance from the council on how specific we want the franchise agreement. So I guess, you need to tell us what you need guidance from us on tonight so you can leave here with all the answers, questions answered that we, you want us to answer. So it would be, I think it'd be helpful if you sort of listed out or told us what you want us to, thumbs up, thumbs down, whatever you want us to do.
Sure. And I think Dan and Jason were talking about, I think, one of the big forks in the road is, and I think, explain it better, do you want like two carriers on one pole or next pole over? So that is a big piece of the puzzle that staff needs to get some guidance on.
I'm feeling like I would be far better prepared to get the list of questions and then be able to spend the right amount of time in the right places to answer them. I have to say for myself, I'm not going to be comfortable giving direction tonight based on what I've heard over the course of 30 minutes.
Are there other, how long's the list?
It's not very long. I mean, I would say maybe, in my mind, two or three forks in the road, that is one of them. We can propose several ways. We can look at it, maybe we can show some mockups, just to give better guidance, like, if you, so you can feel more prepared to, we can write a couple, like, a couple of ways, that's fine. Write some alternative language. I don't, I think that should stop, but that's not a huge roadblock. So that's one of them. The other one is, do you want it, again, not a huge roadblock, do you want it specific to these 38 sites? Or do you want a little bit of play? You know, a really specific exhibit limiting to the actual applications at hand? Or a broader agreement, wouldn't have to come back to council for an additional location or maybe a few additional locations. Some general guidance on that would be helpful. But again, we can propose alternative language as well.
That's nice, you're reaching for your... Yeah, I assume that these 38 sites are, were identified by you folks as perhaps providing the best coverage. And I'd be kind of, I mean, I'm not in any position to decide where else it could possibly go. So I'm, that's my comment, what I heard. I mean, it may not...
Well, I think, I mean, generally, I'm going to feel better if the community has the chance to take a look at these maps they've heard tonight, for these questions to be posed, and then to provide some, some feedback or input. I mean, I would be very concerned just to de facto approve 38 specific sites in these specific locations without having had the chance, A, for myself to think about it, and B, most, more importantly, for the community to be able to take a look at it.
I'm not seeing a council ready to give you answers with any sort of certainty at this point.
Okay.
I think if we can craft things with questions, craft an agenda bill with questions built in, that probably serves us pretty well.
And some language that you'll actually see before you that might help as well. Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Much appreciated. And Scott, you got off awfully easy on this one. Well, well done on that. So, yeah, as council members, I heard someone mention like a short break at this point. Is that true? True? Okay. Let's call it a five-minute break. We'll come back at 7:07. I'm going to go. Go for it.
I think you should.
Meaning we'll return to order. We move now to appearances, moment when anyone may introduce, may speak to the council on any issue they wish. Please begin by introducing yourself, giving your address. Detailed rules of conduct are on the back door, but they really just boil down to please be civil. So, welcome. Welcome, Meg.
Good evening. My name is Meg Lippett. I live at 405294th Avenue Southeast. I've been before this council previously requesting an apology from Councilmember Graus for his denigrating my integrity, an apology which I did not receive. But now I come before you to question his legal opinion. I am not an attorney, but I can read. At the bottom of the MICA website, it clearly states, and I quote, "Legal. Mercer Island Center for the Arts is a 501(c)(3) organization. Our federal tax ID number is 46-431-9988." The Councilmember Grass, who does have a law degree, stated at the last city council meeting on September 6, 2016, and I quote, "There have been, I don't know how many dozens of members of the public of all ages in front of us talking about the community benefit of MICA. Far more people than ever came to us to talk about the community benefit of Kite Hill. So if we're talking about private organizations, which I don't even consider MICA a private organization..." So Councilmember Grass, I'm wondering, is 501(c)(3) a public or a private organization? I'm asking for legal opinion. Maybe the city attorney could clarify for both of us. Furthermore, in addition to being able to read, I'm also able to listen. Councilmember Grass, during the same meeting stated, and I quote, "I don't understand why we're getting our back up against an organization that has got public support, that has been here time and again with dozens and dozens of people, of the kids, or the adults, or the seniors who have come here and told us how important this is. But I want to ask you, Councilmember Grass, if you can recall anyone, including myself, speaking before you about their concerns about building a three-and-a-half-story building 270 feet long and 150 feet deep in our open parkland. Councilmember Grass, you represent us who wish to preserve the park as open land for public use, as well as those who advocate using it for private development. I hope you will remember us. I voted for you, as you know, so you represent me as well. I trust that now you will begin to treat MICA as the private organization that it is rather than a public entity." And finally, I'm also concerned about this comment. I just don't get it, and I would hope that we can get beyond this, just not nickel and dime over $4,000. With MICA raising $25 million, what is the rationale for absorbing money from the $4,000 other private developers pay? I'm just wondering if it's fair to taxpayers not to charge one private entity when others must pay. Thank you."
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you for your service. I ask this council to seriously think about your role in interfering with business competition, and whether the results are likely to be beneficial. For your reference, in case you haven't seen it, I have emailed the proposed changes to the code that MICA is requesting. I focus on the fact that MICA plans to operate a private cafe and bar in a public park. Let's set aside for a moment the fact that this council will be the first on a permanent basis to commercialize our natural resources, a very place many of us go to escape the trappings of modern society, or the fact that a private development will be placed in a zone labeled P for "public institutions," where the proposed definition of said private development is labeled, quote, "public facilities," unquote. I think we all know that the only thing public about MICA is the fact that it wishes to be built on public land. Councilmember Sandersen, as a former restaurant owner in the town center, you have not been shy about sharing your experiences with how difficult it was to run a successful and profitable small business. The exit of Stopzki's speaks to this. I imagine that rent was one of the larger expense items paid each month. Councilmember Sandersen, if you still operated Stopzki's, would it be of concern to you that one of your competitors operated without paying rent? That the food in the restaurant could be priced lower because the operator did not have to pay for the use of the facilities? Do any of you think it's fair that a restaurant in a public park which pays zero rent would be competing with our island restaurants and bars? Is it just that every other island restaurant is required by code to provide onsite parking, but the completely rent-subsidized cafe-bar on public land is exempt from providing any parking to its patrons? I wonder why the city council is proposing to pick winners and losers in our restaurant scene? Why is the city discriminating in favor of certain organizations who happen to be popular at the moment? In a recent $18.1 million judgment against the city of Sea-Tac, the reportedly third largest land use verdict in Washington history, trial judge Richard McDermott eloquently stated in his oral ruling that "A government entity owes a duty of honesty and transparency to those people to whom they deal with. It doesn't matter who those people are. It doesn't matter whether they like those people or they don't like those people. Governments are in unique positions. There are all kinds of cases in this state which uniformly say that governments have to be open, honest, and transparent, and straightforward in their dealings with everybody because that's their job. They're supposed to represent us. They represent us, and because of that, they have a duty of honesty and transparency." Unquote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hello. First of all, I want to thank you all for, I don't know what you did, maybe it was just dumb luck, but I can now hear you when I watch you from home on television. So, I don't know if Ally did something, or they fixed the wire, but it sounds much better, and I know that others have commented as well, so it's nice to be able to not be here and but still keep in mind what's going on. Secondly, I'd like to thank Councilmember Rizentiner and Councilmembers Sandersen and Wendy for the dialogue that you brought to the council last week. It was refreshing to hear the discussion on the fees, and in particular Wendy and Jeff, just really worrying about the dangerous precedent that that action was going to take. And it was nice seeing honest, genuine dialogue up here. Another observation, it was, it's just a suggestion, Ross Freeman's communications, I think there should be a vetting process internally, or maybe with some community members before they send them out. They seem somewhat trite, reactionary, lack comprehensive details, and it's just an opportunity. If that's the form you're going to use to post on next door, those little burbs, make them meaningful. Another thing I'd like to cover is Sound Transit 3. I sent an email to all of you requesting that you put it before a vote on whether or not you were going to support the ST3 initiative. I heard back from one council member, which I very much appreciate. They showed their opinion with me privately, but I think it really should come to a vote. Are you, aren't you going to support Sound Transit 3, especially now that you've learned that they've done the bait and switch on a lot of the aspects of Sound Transit 2 when it comes to Mercer Island? Mayor Bassett, I want to thank you, this is a big thank you session tonight, for looking at the parking right again. When I first approached you on the idea back in 2014 about making it dedicated to Mercer Island residents only, you said, "Not possible, not going to happen." Councilmember Wong, thank you for initiating that discussion in the middle treat and finding out and validating what we brought forward from a legal perspective, that there is an opportunity. I think that's a great win-win for the community. And then finally, and most importantly, I hope you dig in your heels and take quick, decisive, and deliberate action with ST2 implementation. Specifically, I would like to see a new EIS done that's comprehensive and addresses all of the issues. Again, they've done the bait and switch. Island Crest Way being shut down wasn't part of the original EIS. Bus Barns, bus stations, all those kind of things weren't factored in. So, please look at doing an EIS, and also commissioning a comprehensive traffic engineering study, because we need it desperately. Thank you very much. And I made it into three minutes.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with that, I'll close public comments. Thank you.
About giving the name and address for each speaker?
That was supposed to have happened. If they didn't, that's on them. All right, well, speakers, you're hereby chastised, apparently, for not having given name and address. Okay, so let's move to...
I got up with you saying that. You didn't see me.
I'm sorry?
So, I was looking at the agenda, and I thought we were going to have speeches on each of the four topics.
Ah, okay, that sometimes happens when we have a public hearing on an issue. Tonight, it's just appearances. You're happy...
So may I speak.
You may. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Hewitt-Speth. I live at 8320 Southeast 34th Street. I am having nightmares about traffic on and off of Mercer Island, getting on, getting off, and traveling to Seattle and Bellevue. How are we going to protect ourselves, and what is your strategy and plan to protect our access and mobility on and off the island, especially when the rails are being built and we're trapped here? That's what I'd like to know. What's your strategy? What's your plan? And how are we going to keep our HOV lanes that will cut down traffic for others east of us? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more time, anyone else? Okay, with that, I will, again, close public comments. We'll move to the consent calendar. We have payables, payroll, minutes, and Agenda Bill 5218, the AFSP 2016-2017 Collective Bargaining Agreement. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Submove.
Okay. Any desire to move anything off of it? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to the first item, regular business, Agenda Bill 5216, Mercer Island Library Board Resolution and Charter Update. I don't know who's on for this. Bruce Fletcher, welcome.
Thank you. For the record, Bruce Fletcher, Director of Parks and Recreation, and also staff person for the Mercer Island Library Board. And we have some people here, and first of all, council liaison is Jeff Sandersen. He's been great at it. We also have our current chair, Mary Kay Williston, and she'll speak in a minute. We also have King County Library System Cluster Manager, Deborah Westwood, who is here if there's any questions that come up for the library, King County Library. So back in 2014, the Mercer Island Library Board was formed, and a lot of great work by many of you council members that got this, had to do with renovation at the library. Had a lot of great work with current and some past board members, got a lot of feedback from the public, which was great, and worked with King County Library System, and also had a lot of great work with Executive Director Gary Rosdin. So tonight, what we're here tonight to talk about is extending the sunset date. Currently, the resolution sunsets the library board at December 31, 2016. And the library board is really energetic, ready to go, to keep working, and they want to extend the sunset date by two years. And I think the recommendation will be positive. So I'd like to bring the current chair, Mary Kay, up to talk a little bit about Mercer Island Library Board. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Kay Williston, know a lot of you, 611-792 second Avenue Southeast. I've never spoken in front of you guys before, and I thank you for all of your help in the process of working with our renovation for the Mercer Island Library and establishing or re-establishing a library board back in 2014. Dan was there at the time, and we appreciate your help too, and Jeff's there now. But we're doing it currently, as the renovations finally come to a slow close. If anybody's ever done any renovation in their home, sometimes those punch lists go on and on, but things are coming together nicely, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback, and some constructive feedback about the renovation of the library. But overall, I think we're very happy with it. So our board is now working towards new goals, and we're going to be discussing on Monday on what those goals look like. We're starting to look a little bit more like a traditional advisory board, focusing on some community engagement, and hopefully developing awareness in our community of the huge number of services and opportunities that are available through KCLS and the resources that they provide throughout our county. To that end, we really would like to have a little more time, specifically two years, to engage our community more with the services within our Mercer Island Library, in addition to continuing to provide KCLS with feedback from our community and keeping our whole community engaged in the services that were provided. So, that's what we'd like to do.
All right. Thank you. Is there other questions for Mary Kay? Benson?
Yeah, okay. Thanks, sorry, thanks for your service. I noticed on the changes, I don't know if this is something directed at you or maybe Bruce, but there was, I saw a reduction in the size of the board, and I was just wondering why that is. Is that a matter of attendance, or, I guess I'm just wondering why the reduction?
It's apt for us to do, to kind of go with a lot of the other commissions and boards that we have, and seven is a really good number. We are, we do have a couple vacancies right now, and so I think seven will work just fine.
Anyone else?
Dan? Why don't we just make this a standing board instead of having to go through this every two years? I mean, I think the issue that brought us back to the fore was that we allowed it to expire, and then all of a sudden, we were in a mess. And rather than risk that happening again, is there any reason we just shouldn't? Since the community has made it clear that the library is a critical community asset, that, and I'm sure that there will always be issues, new issues coming up, why don't we just bite the bullet and make this a permanent committee?
I think that's a question for you.
I mean, I just...
I think that there's the energy behind it. I agree with you on the board, although I will say that as the renovations are becoming more complete, the audience is getting smaller, but I do agree with you that in, to make sure that we continue to have engagement with KCLS, it would be nice to have the board go forward in perpetuity. I think that we would be happy to do that, but I can't speak for the whole board until we...
I was just wondering whether it was the board or Bruce, whether it was staff who suggested the two-year extension, or...
Yeah, it was staff, and right now, we might get the resolution to continue. If we want to do it in perpetuity, we would do it, have to do an ordinance, which we can do that.
Is it for sure because it's provided for in the interlocal? I don't, I don't, I don't think there was an ordinance before, I mean, you'd be wrong. I doubt there was an ordinance before when we used to have a library board, but I don't know the history of this, but it's up for Carrie to answer that question, is to...
Yeah, you could either choose to extend for two years through the resolution, or send staff back to work on ordinance. It's up to the council. I think the library board members would be favorable for either.
Wendy, so Carrie, did you want to weigh in?
Well, I actually don't know the answer off the top of my head, but Ally's telling me that there was an ordinance.
Yeah. It was an establish in our city code, and then when the library board was disbanded, it was removed from the city code. So, if it's going to be a standing one, and I, Bruce and I discussed this for a while, and I think what the thought was, if, if we do another two-year period with the library board, and there's a body of work that, that justifies the board meeting on a regular basis, then the recommendation would to be come back to make it a standing board. But since we're so close to the renovations being completed, it was, let's extend it for two years and make sure that it's, it's, it's a standing board that, that is, has a purpose and has a function in the next two years.
Wendy?
Which leads into my question, Mary Kay. What issues do you see working on, and do you see meeting every month, every two months? Like what...
We discussed not meeting every month. We discussed meeting potentially every two months, but we do feel that there is, just in becoming familiar with the library personally, beyond what my kids use in just checking out books, with the changes in eBooks and all the different resources that are available through KCLS, I think that our community would be well-served to have us out there kind of promoting our library on the island. And I think that many of us see that as something that would be of value and something we would focus on, in addition to continuing to give them feedback about what kinds of things that our citizens would request. In some ways, we have a, I don't know, I think it's a unique environment, and we have a lot of senior citizens and others in the community that aren't really into the eBook world quite yet, and it would be easy to lose collection size, it would be easy to allow things to move a little too quickly, maybe, for some of our citizens, and we'd like to make sure that we maintain the current services that we have as well. So there is some engagement and communication and dialogue that I think should take place between Mercer Island and KCLS in the future. That's my opinion, though.
So it's operational, kind of programmatic partnership work, not so much bringing in speakers or community forum?
I think there's been communication about both of those. Our goals are work in progress. We're going to be discussing them at the Monday meeting. We've had conversations about both of those pieces. I don't think we see ourselves as running the Mercer Island Library, but I think communicating what our needs and what our requests are in terms of services is a fair thing to do.
Okay, thanks.
Chuck, did you have something? Jeff, did you have something?
No, I just wanted to address the issue on the two years versus the permanent, in that just the bigger picture is, we have, every piece of committee that we put together requires staff time, and we know we're tight on staff time as we look at budget and budget shortfalls, that we need to be very, you know, that there's a useful purpose. Also anecdotally, and while in reality, we also have a sort of a, and I want to solve this, a volunteer shortage, I would say in a way, because we have openings on the Arts Council, we know we had trouble getting volunteers at the thrift shop, and that the more committees we have, A, that's a great opportunity for more people to volunteer, but if we don't have a large volunteer pool, we should make sure we continue to monitor how much we have as a total supply of volunteerdom, so that we get that all filled. So I mean, I'm supportive of us continuing in this period and just seeing it in two years, whether it merits permanent status.
Anyone else, Debbie?
Yeah, I think, for me, without question, it goes for a minimum of two years, but to the broader point, you know, appreciated Ally and yours, which is, beyond the two years, what is the agenda and what is the purpose? I know that there have been some loose conversations or references to Mercer Island being sort of a point of innovation or test and trial for some of the new programs that KCLS has. And to me, that is exciting. So just as you referenced perhaps, we don't want to transition too quickly to the eBooks, there's probably other services that are coming, they're probably, I can't imagine, but I would want Mercer Island to be out there and to look at them, because I do think we are unique, and perhaps we can provide a little bit of a test site and bring some new fun, cool library stuff to the community. So kudos to you guys for wanting to keep going, and thank you, and it's like you slogged away for years and years, and you still have the energy, so I'm just super, super thankful. Sometimes it felt like longer than that, so, but kudos, and again, much appreciation.
So I'm looking for other questions, and if not, I'd be looking for a motion.
Can I, yes, one?
Yeah.
I have to ask the question that Bart Dawson raised with staff. In the Objective section, item three, the one change that was made over the existing charter is the word "significant" was added, which is, is a departure from the words of the interlocal. As those of us who spent far too much time on this issue when we created this board went through, we pointed with great pride and emphasis the language in the interlocal, which says that, as you quoted it in the purpose, "The board, district shall regularly solicit input from the board on issues relating to all aspects of library services and facilities." And that's what the existing charter has, and now it's been changed to the word "significant" proposed changes. And so it, it just concerns me that, that the decisions being made to effectively, would appear to be to modify the interlocal, which I don't think is within, I mean, I don't, I don't think that that's something that should be within, that decision shouldn't be made within the purview of, of deciding whether or not to extend the, the library board. Or maybe I'm missing something.
Want to speak to it?
Sure.
Because I wasn't at the meeting where they made those changes, I will say that I can't really speak to the decision-making behind it. And I didn't realize that it's attached to the agreement as to whether or not we continue for another two years.
At the meeting, at the meeting, the library board went word by word, and this is something that they agreed upon, and that's why it's in there. Board member Dawson wanted to change it via email a little bit late because we had a vote on it, and so it stood. We didn't, the board felt, my interpretation was the board felt they didn't want to nitpick on, on how she should run this library, but we wanted to advise and work together as a partnership, as a team. So if you guys want us to go back and look at this, the word "significant," we can, we have a meeting Monday night. I don't know if it's a, how important that is, but-
My only point is that it's, it's effectively an amendment to the interlocal, is what this is doing, and I don't, I'm just not sure that this is the, this is the place to do an effective amendment to the interlocal. So I, I'm sorry, Carrie, you want to?
Well, I just wanted to add, Councilmember Grouse raises a point that there's clearly an inconsistency in the verbiage between this and the interlocal, but I would submit that it doesn't actually effectively amend the ILA, because an ILA requires approval by the governing body, which is the council, and so it can only be amended by approval from the council. So there's just a language inconsistency or discrepancy that I, I just wanted to point out again, that's a technical point, but, you know, I think it is important to note that it doesn't actually change the ILA, that the ILA would trump this.
Well, I think you can point out that, I mean, the next section, the Authority section, says that the MI Library Board is sanction pursuant to the interlocal agreement. I was at the meeting, and I can speak to the point, that we discussed, I mean, again, significant is one of those words that how do you define it? It was clear that the work that was done at the library was significant, and by anybody's definition, it would come under it, but that there are a million decisions that the library makes, and we didn't want to, you know, hamstring either them or us by having it be every other, and that's how significant got in there. But I do think that the ILA is, is laid out as the governing authority of the, of this charter, so that's just in the Objective section.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you both very much, and council, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll do it. I'd like to authorize Resolution Number 1519 to extend the Mercer Island Library Board to sunset on December 31st, 2018.
Moved in second, any discussion? Dan?
I'd offer an amendment to, to strike the word "significant" from Section 2, 3.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, moved in second, Dan, you want to speak to it?
Yeah, it's, it's just, as Jeff said, there's, we have an interlocal, and the reality is that for two years, we operate under the charter, which, which tracked the interlocal. So now we are making a change, and changes have consequences. So I don't think we can sit here and say that adding a word wasn't intended to do something. So if, if we as a council want to make a decision that we are going to basically, I mean, and Jeff, you said this is under the, under the title "Objectives," but in fact, the lead-in sentence is saying, "In order to achieve the above stated purpose, the MI Library Board shall be empowered to do the following." It doesn't, it's more than objectives, this is actually telling them this is their authority, and we've now said that their authority in this is limited to significant proposed changes, even though, whoever determines what significant is, even though we are party to an interlocal which doesn't have that qualifier in it. And the only thing, other thing I would think, and I would just point out, Debbie remembers this, and Benson remembers this, because we were, we were fighting this tooth and nail for too many months, that, that we could not get the time of day from King County Library System on too many issues for a long time. And thankfully, due to various events which happened, we, that changed around. And so we've now, under the existing formula, under the existing charter, we have gotten to a point where apparently we have a good working relationship with King County Library System. I would just respectfully say that there's no reason to make a change. It's now working the way it is, and I'm not sure that there's any, I haven't heard any reasons given, you know, why we would make a change at this point. We've got something that's working, we fought very hard to get to this point, and I, I agree with what Bart has said, that this is, we shouldn't be going backwards on, on this at this time.
Seeing silence for a moment, I'm going to wade in here. I'm going to note that the full sentence here says, "To ensure that any significant proposed changes..." ...dot, dot, dot, "are only implemented after input has been provided for Mercer Island residents." And the thing that gives me pause here is that it's not that they have the option of, the board has the option of calling out something as requiring public input, but they're obliged to seek public input, and I, wonderful for them that they've gotten through two years without being bogged down in the morass of every single change going to the public. That is the way this would read without the word "significant." So my, my sense of it is that the word "significant" makes pretty good sense to have there, and if there's ever a fight, the fallback is to the interlocal agreement, so we've got a, we've got a safety valve on it. But for that reason, I'm inclined to not be supportive of the amendment. Others?
Just so you're clear, Bruce, my recollection is, the term "Mercer Island residents" was intended to refer to the members of the board. It wasn't intended to be a, a statement saying that this is when you go out to the public. There's, so the board, the whole purpose of this, the charter was to ensure that Mercer Island residents through the board are, are the ones that are providing comment. So I, I don't, because I read it the first, the first time I read this thing, I read it the same way you did, I said, oh, this means that, you know, when should the board go out and ask the public what they think? But I don't think that was our, that was the council's intention when we wrote it that way. So that, that's my recollection of it, that residents refers to the board, but-
Okay. Anyone else?
So Deborah's here from King County Library Systems, I wonder if you have an interest in significant versus insignificant wording for this, to put you on the spot.
I do have an interest in significant versus insignificant, only for the efficiency and focus of the board. I might actually even have been the one who suggested including this. If the King County Library System decides to change its office supply vendor, does the board want to, want to approve that? If the King County Library System decides to change the landscaping company that handles its, its contract, the Mercer Island Library Board doesn't actually have the authority to, to approve those contracts. Do we want to spend time on that? What we wanted to do, what I was hoping to do with this is to allow the board to spend its time and energy on topics that relate to the services that are provided to the citizens of the city of Mercer Island, and to help us focus our energies on things that really are of importance and will affect their ability to use and enjoy their library system. There's nothing nefarious, and there's nothing about it that's trying to sneak anything through. I really kind of regret the hangover of a lack of trust from our previous experience, and I, I see that that shapes the decisions that we make now. The intentions were to allow the library advisory board to, the library board, sorry, I say that wrong, all my other boards are called advisory boards, to allow the library board to focus its energy on, on programs and services and get them out of the minutia of operations of the back room. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else, comments? Debbie?
I'm not offering an amendment to the amendment, but I'm considering it, but it would read something to the extent of, "To ensure that any significant proposed changes in Mercer Island library services and facilities, as determined by the library board, are only implemented after input has been provided for Mercer Island library residents." The point being that the board itself would be the one who would determine what is of significance. And I want to believe in the, the good intent of both the KCLS staff and our community to not get bogged down in the details and hopefully not be commenting on office supplies or landscaping, et cetera. Potential's always there, but, but they would use good sense. So I throw that out there as one option. The other one would simply be to take this back and have the, the library board look at it again and make sure that there's a full and clear discussion about not only what is the wording, but what is the intent? Because I think ultimately, that's what it comes down to, and I would want everyone, as you say, there's a hangover, but everyone to feel on solid footing as we go forward. So I see those as the two paths that, that I could consider at this point.
And here, I thought this was an easy slam dunk Agenda Bill that was going to just fly through and be beyond other business. I don't know what to do with that. So I think Debbie's sort of flirting an idea and looking for support to offer an amendment further, but I, I don't have more-
Well, we have, we have one amendment that's-
We do have an amendment, yes. So we're going to have to vote on the amendment, and-
I, I will, I second that amendment, actually, I like Deputy Mayor's proposal.
I would withdraw my amendment if Debbie wants to offer her amendment.
Okay, it sounds like the, the firster and the seconder are both withdrawing that, and so Debbie, why don't you go ahead and make your proposed amendment?
Okay, I'd like to offer an amendment to Section Number 2, Objectives, Point Number 3. It would read, "To ensure that any significant proposed changes in Mercer Island library services and facilities, as determined by the library board, are only implemented after input has been provided for Mercer Island residents."
Second?
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, motion? There's a nay. Okay, so, and we'll come now back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Good. Okay, thank you, Bruce, and Mary Kay, and Deborah. We'll go to Agenda Bill 5214, Residential Development Standards Community Engagement Update. Allison, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Allison Van Gorpe, your Ombudsman and Administrative Services Manager in DSG. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the community engagement plan for the upcoming Residential Development Standards update. Just dive into, I've got about nine slides, which I would love to get through, and then we have plenty of time for questions after that. Okay, so tonight, I'm going to take you through three topics. The first is the Town Center debrief that Kirsten conducted with members of the City Council over the last few weeks. Second will be the actual community engagement plan, and third is an optional budget request. So Kirsten Taylor had individual calls or meetings with several of the City Council members, I think, either all of you or almost all of you, and had a conversation around, you know, what worked well with Town Center process, what didn't work so well, what lessons could we learn, and how could we build on that process for something even more successful going forward with the residential code update and in future, in future long-range planning efforts. And from those conversations, we were able to draw out these six bullet points, which were kind of the key themes that we heard from several people. One was to have multiple avenues to inform the public of what's going on, to scope the update process very carefully, to ensure that there's adequate time for other topics, and that we've got a good understanding of how much effort everything's going to take. Provide a detailed schedule on the website to make it clear when people can get engaged and when particular topics will be coming up for discussion. And then publish public comments the city receives on the website, so that it's easy for folks in the public to see what others in the community are saying. Use graphics and visuals throughout the process and beginning early in the process to help make it easier both for the commission and the public to understand the concepts and ideas that are being discussed. And finally, to use a moderator for community meetings to make them more effective and to flow more smoothly, I guess, and help engage people in the conversation even, even So we took all the things we heard there and incorporated it with kind of our initial ideas about how we'd like to do the community engagement for this upcoming effort, and came up with the following, I'd say it's a draft schedule and plan for community engagement events. The idea that is to have a more enhanced project kickoff over the next six weeks or so, that will include a media launch with the websites- That will include a media launch with, the website's already up, we'll be getting even more information on the website, online commenting forums are open, we'll be doing some social media stuff on Facebook and Nextdoor, working to get an article in the MI Reporter, blogs, potentially doing a postcard mailing to the entire island, getting posters up in key locations, A-Frame signs, all those kinds of things. And then doing a big community meeting towards the end of October that would really be kind of a public kickoff of the project, inviting members of the community to come in, help us define the problem and the scope of work for the planning commission. We would then go into the second phase, which is really the planning commission process. I'll go into a little more detail about this in a second. We're thinking that's going to be a several month process that would run from roughly November to early April. Concurrent with that, we would also be doing roadshow meetings where staff members would go out to existing community groups and make presentations at their regular meetings to provide them kind of an update on what's going on and some of the ideas being discussed at the planning commission. We'd also have two big community meetings and a public hearing. Finally, this will come to council for your final review and approval of the amended code in the spring. We're anticipating first coming in April and giving you four to five meetings to hear the recommendations of the planning commission, do a public hearing, and then have a number of times for this to come back for your discussion and decision. So I went through a little bit of this Phase One stuff. It's all here listed. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the community kickoff meeting as well. I think this would be similar to what folks experienced with some of the Town Center community meetings, with the idea being to hold it at a community venue like the community center or school, have kind of a open house format with display boards, a staff presentation to kind of frame up what we're considering, what's under discussion, and then an open public comment session where folks can have three minutes to tell us their ideas and thoughts and comments. So then we went into the second phase with the planning commission. As I was saying, we're anticipating this taking a few months. Right now, we're looking at 10 to 12 meetings and trying to stick with the regular planning commission's schedule, first and third Wednesdays. Many of those meetings would be study sessions with limited opportunities for public comment, perhaps at a couple of places throughout the process, in addition to those larger community meetings that I mentioned earlier. There might be points at which the planning commission would invite experts or professionals to come in and do a panel discussion, kind of similar to a couple of times we did that in Town Center with, we had, one was developers that had no interest in Mercer Island and one was with Town Center property owners. So we might do something along those lines with development professionals or architects or others who could help us understand how code changes would actually be implemented. As I mentioned before, we're looking at how can we integrate graphics and visuals into this process to help make it easier to understand the concepts that are being discussed. And the deliverable from all this will be the recommended code amendments from the planning commission, and that will be transmitted to City Council. We're aiming for early April for that. And the community meetings and the roadshow meetings, I think I mentioned, but it's a similar idea of having those bigger meetings at a public venue somewhere that's easy for residents to get to, community center or school or something along those lines, matching up a presentation from staff and display boards with an opportunity to make comments and, and have that formal input. And the roadshow meetings are looking at existing groups from the preschool association to the women voters, Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, any, any kinds of groups or organizations that would be interested in having a presentation. Staff could go out and do that to get them engaged and help them understand other ways that they can join the process. And then throughout all this, we'll of course be encouraging written comments. We've already got a website form up and an email set up where people can send in comments, and those are always encouraged and a great way for us to get more in-depth feedback from people. And those will be uploaded to the website and provided directly to the planning commission. Okay. And as I mentioned, we're looking at four or five meetings when this comes to council later in the spring, probably a similar order of events that we used in Town, with the Town Center process, with an initial presentation from the planning commission to council, then a public hearing, and then two to three sessions to discuss and deliberate and make a decision. Okay. The final thing I wanted to discuss is budget. At your last meeting, two weeks ago, you actually approved this top bullet, some additional funding to cover the promotion and media and first public meeting this fall. Based on what we heard during the Town Center debrief, we're also providing this optional section at the bottom that would provide additional funding for consultants to do the graphic and the visual development as well as meeting facilitation. And this would be for work beginning this fall and running into next year, but we think it would be advantageous to perhaps get those consultants under contract now so that they can be involved from beginning of the project and continue through the rest of the work into next year. And with that, I'll throw it up into, to questions and happy to answer anything you have.
All right. Great. Benson?
Allison, you know, as far as those community meetings, any thought given to maybe having one that's during the day? Because some people have problems getting to an evening meeting. And I know that you mentioned that you tend to take this on the roadshow or on the road. But, you know, those are probably going to be very short presentations, I would think, at these various groups. And so there may not be that opportunity to share ideas and, you're probably, I don't know. Are you guys intending to do the full show, provide?
It would really depend on the groups and their agendas. I mean, some of them do have very limited time for outside topics, and others would be probably more open to a longer...
So is there any thought about doing a daytime?
It's definitely a possibility. I think we've seen in the past that we haven't gotten as much attendance at daytime meetings, but, you know, it is a different audience that might be able to show up at those times. So I think it's just a weighing of what's the best use of our resources and, you know, what's the best way to get the most people involved overall?
Well, I would like you to, you know, maybe the staff to take a look at that. I mean, I just think that this is an island-wide issue.
Definitely.
It might actually attract a lot of people who might not venture out in the evening or who don't, you know, have busy schedules or whatever else, so.
Sure.
Others? Dan?
I'm a little bit concerned that we've got so much change in the schedule before we've even started. And if you recall, what the original plan was to start this in September, and then staff said we couldn't do it in September, so we wanted to do the initial meeting, I believe, October 7th or 10th or something like that. And now you've said to us that the first meeting will now be the end of October. And then originally, we had talked about getting it done in December, then you said it would, not you, but staff said it would slip to January, and now it's, it's slipped to April, and we haven't even started yet. So I, I just, I'm, I mean, I understand that it's, it's always good to give us time for things, but, you know, I, I just don't, I'm having, I'm personally having a hard time understanding how we've, before we even start, we've already slipped months on this program. And, I mean, Evan was up here a few weeks ago with a completely different schedule. And now it's, nothing has happened that would change that, but, but it had in fact just changed. So I'm concerned about that.
Well, you're correct that the schedule has changed somewhat and that it's lengthened out further into next year. That is true. I think what's been going on behind the scenes is we've been looking at, you know, what is the scope as we've developed it so far? And realistically, how much time will it take for all of those discussions to happen with the planning commission in a meaningful way? And we're trying to be realistic about what that timeline looks like. We've also added some time upfront to do more community engagement and more outreach based on feedback we've had from council in the last few meetings.
Why did we lose the October, the early October date? I mean, Kirsten, when you were up here two weeks ago, I think you were still, you were still early October.
I think that Scott maybe can answer that. I'm just going to punt it right over there.
From my perspective, it really has to do with promoting the event itself in order to get a mailing out to the entire island, which is something that we've been planning to do. I need about five or six weeks of lead time.
So if we ask, if we agree that you didn't need to do a mailing to the entire island, you could get us back to early October?
Possibly. It also depends on the availability of space for meetings.
Debbie?
First of all, thank you, because I know that for me, it was, it was pretty important to be able to see a little more specificity in terms of the overall program, but also in terms of the numbers that were sitting behind it. One of the concerns that came forth when we did the Town Center work, at least particularly on my part, was the report out, the content on the website was incredibly difficult to navigate. If you weren't deeply intimate with the issues, it was hard to just jump to the right section to understand what happened at the meeting, what the outcomes were, and then subsequently what would be coming up with the key issues at the next meeting. When I look at this, there's nothing that's called out in terms of capturing and maintaining publicly accessible report out from the planning commission meetings and from the, the public sessions. Is that something that staff feels confident it can do with quality and in the right time without seeing additional resources?
Well, what the plan is currently, and you tell me if this seems like it's a high enough bar for what you're expecting, for planning commission meetings, we'll do the typical meeting minutes and post them after they've been approved by the commission at the following meeting. So that's usually two, three weeks later. And then for the larger public meetings, one thing we did at the hearings during Town Center was produce a transcript of the meetings and put that on the website. I think that's something we could easily do again. If you're looking for something that's more of a detailed meeting summary, that would be more work, and we'd have to look at, you know, how to fit that into the schedule.
I think, I think I do have concern if there's two to three weeks between the time a meeting takes place and then there's an approval by the planning commission that goes to the public. Because this is, for all that it has been extended, it's not a super-long period of time. So if you're losing two to three weeks every single time, that, that's a significant lag. People probably, or council would also recognize, and I'm obviously kicking the cord here, that I did have some concern about $12,000 for what I understood would be two postcard mailings to the community. Recognizing that different people respond to notice and information in different ways, I would be comfortable with one postcard and then pose the question of whether or not you would take, if it was $2,000 for graphic design roughly, and then $5,000 for two mailings, that take $5,000 and, and look at it, ask yourselves, do you have the resources to turn around that information, to come up with the detailed meetings? It doesn't have to be detailed and so forth, insofar as it's a, you know, recitation of each and every comment, but that people could go and say, okay, what meaningful things happened at that public comment period, at that planning commission, at that, with that particular expert that came through, so that there's a faster turnaround and people are really able to get to the essence without necessarily having to wade through, you know, paper and postings and documentation. So that would be one opportunity that I might suggest that you take a look at, and that is to just redistribute funding from one postcard to making sure that information is accurate and timely posted.
Looking for other questions. Dave, did you have something?
I'll try and frame it as a question. Thanks for the presentation. Super helpful.
Thank you.
The length of the process seems long to me. And I think of that in a couple of ways. One, nobody is overburdened like DSG, and you all will have to do the work. So it seems like this differs in my mind from the Town Center stuff in that that was an exploratory, what do you envision, community? And this seems to be more of a, a fairly well-defined scoped set of problems. We, we know kind of what they are, and they have a, probably a limited set of remedies or solutions to them. So it strikes me that if there's a way we could reduce the scope of the project overall to like 90 days instead of 10 months, then we reduce the expenditure, we drastically cut DSG staff time, which is at a premium, right? And then we solve the problem that I think the community is crying out for much sooner. And I guess I'm not asking you, Allison, I'm looking at you as I'm saying it, but sorry, I look over at you guys and see if you, if that resonates with anyone at all? If it's, I'm going to get some blank looks.
Well, let's do this. Let's ask questions of Allison first and then come back for council, which this counts, you know, amounts more to council.
Yeah. I mean, if you're asking a question of, is that possible, or do staff think that's a good idea?
Allison?
I guess my only caution would be, I think, well, this is, I think what you said is true. This is a more limited scope and more clear what the potential options are. But I also think that this affects almost every resident in Mercer Island and their home, and these issues are going to be very contentious. And if we try to rush it, it could backfire.
Wendy? I would say, Dave, with the holidays right there, November to December, it's good to get this process started and then really focus, January, February, March. But I would like to shorten the timeline, and I would like to talk about the budget. Did I get this right, that it's 21.5 on top of the 15.7 we approved last time? So we're talking 37 to 55 for...
Yes.
Communications and graphics and facilitation and...
That's correct. And that's separate from whatever budget proposal we put in for 2017, 2018.
Right. So I'm kind of struggling with the budget hit here, given the tight budget, and I'm looking to my colleagues now to sort of help with, with this budget on top of the other work we're doing with other issues that we're grappling with. And so I, I get the timeline. I think we need to go through the holidays, but consultants, 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 and mailings, mailings, mailings. I think we have our reporter, we have websites, we have Ross. There have to be better ways to reach people than, than 10 mailings or whatever this plan includes.
One, two, right. They are expensive.
Well, I don't know what the 15K is for graphic development, right? And I don't need all the details. I'm just saying, we have online communications that have to make this easier to reach more people. Stop laughing.
Let's stick with questions. There's obviously going to be some robust debate here amongst the council, but I want to make sure we kind of sequence them, so.
Just to be clear, the, the graphics for 15K is really looking at more of the open design renderings that would show the different options that we're considering as far as, you know, how the code could regulate single-family dwellings.
Okay. So Debbie, did you have a question?
Well, I was, because, you know, Wendy raises good points, there's, you know, finite resources. Looking at that, Wendy, is there something that jumps out in terms of, of numbers? If we're going to 37, is there a place that you logically go?
I don't need to jump into the weeds. I'm just raising the general question of how, you know, where are we going to spend our limited resources? And this is a lot of good information, but so there's a lot of other work we need to do. So priorities are really helpful, I think, in directing limited staff resources as well as financial resources. So I'm just going to raise a question, not give you any answers.
Other questions for Allison? All right. Thank you very much. I thought that was a great presentation. And don't go too far, of course, because we may...
I'll be right here.
We may bring you back, but... So, folks, there's a, the motion here on page three is to approve the $21,500 optional budget request. And so there's obviously some interest in discussion about both timeframe and budget here. I'd like us to figure out how to work through this expeditiously. And so if there was a motion to be made, I'd take that. Otherwise, if, if you really feel we've got to have some, some more discussion before we even get to a motion, we'll go there. Where do folks want to go? I'd be happy to have a motion.
You know, it, it strikes me that there are a couple of potential decisions to be made, and that can be, because staff's only asked us to approve the money, but we can give staff guidance on if we want them to shorten the schedule, how they might shorten the schedule. And with anything, it's, it's basically, what actually happens will dictate what the final schedule is. So if, if, if the planning commission ends up coming back to us and says, can't finish in three months, or two months, or five months, whatever it is, what are we going to do? Tell them they're fired? I mean, we, it's, it's ultimately, ultimately, all we can do as a council is to tell staff we would really like you to try to get to this point, and then so at least they know that our objective is this. And then, but at a more finite thing, we could cancel the first postcard mailing, and that might shave two or three weeks off of this thing, which if, if, yeah, if, I think it's, that's for both mailings, so.
It's two plus five plus five.
Yeah. So, I mean, whatever, whatever the cost is, but it, so I, I just, you know, there's that... So, I mean, whatever, whatever the cost is, but it, so I, I just, you know, as Allison said, she'd need to check whether she can get, get room rental worked out, but, you know, if we can get this, we can save money and also reduce the timeline in this, for example, that's one concrete thing we could strongly suggest to staff.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw in an opinion here, just to make sure it's out on the table and, and not offer a motion at the moment. But, boy, with the Town Center process, I, I would love to do this in 90 days, I'd love to do this in 10 days. That'd be wonderful, and staff get it done, you know, sort of, poof, it's done. But if, if I look back at the way the Town Center process went, and now we tried to get it done, and then it needed to get bigger, and then we tried to get it done, and then it needed to change and, and be different, it stretched out over, what, two years as a result of the, the need to, to, to keep drilling deeper with it and, and changing it? I, and Allison makes, I think, an excellent point. The Town Center affected some people. It didn't affect everybody. This affects everybody. I mean, virtually everybody. And these are, these are gonna be hotly contested issues that, that go right to people's pocketbooks and, and hearts. I think we'd be doing ourselves and our staff a disservice to try to second-guess the staff first and say, no, 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 you've got it wrong, you, you're doing too much, shorten it up. Because I think it's gonna be penny, penny wise, pound foolish to do that. So my sense is, we got a staff for a, a good reason, they've, they've brought us their, their best estimation of, of what this takes to do this right. I would recommend we give them the latitude to do that, to accomplish what, what they're setting out to do. And, you know, I mean, they're spending days and days trying to figure out how to put this together. We spend, eh, five minutes and, and, ah, we're gonna change, we're gonna change the plan. So, I, that's my two cents worth. Anyone else?
Well, I mean, just, I understand that point of view, but this is, I'll, I'll give the other side, because living on First Hill, right near the middle of the war zone on 74th Avenue, it is ugly up there right now. There are, what, how many houses going up on 74th Avenue near 32nd now? It's probably four or five, and, and then there's another shop plant with a, with three that are about to break ground. So we're living this in real time up there, so it's all well and good to say, let's take another six months to get this done, but it is changing things on the ground on First Hill in an unbelievably rapid pace. And so, yeah, it's all
Let me just suggest then, don't cut the budget. Try and cut the time, but throw more money at it so they've got the tools they need to be able to do this in less time.
I, I wanna cut the time. I wanna give them, I wanna say that, that I think 90 days is aggressive, as much as I would love to get fully behind 90 days. But, but I think that, I mean, I would love to ask staff to have planning commission try to get this done by the end of February. I mean, something like that, and just say, that's your objective, is see if you can make that work. And so you're with us in, in March, and so you're, or the end of Jan, something, something more aggressive than this. Because I am just worried that if, that the way this has already slipped so many times now, I mean, this project, the first time staff came to us, this was a closeout in December. And, and now we're a closeout in June. So, and we haven't started. So I, I think we need to tell, I think we as a council need to tell the staff, this is our expectation, and, and, you know, if they can't perform that, they'll let us know. But we, I think we owe it to the community not to continue to let this project slip schedule-wise before we even start. And we need to try to get back closer to where we started this thing. And we're not gonna get it done by the end of February. At least if we say, we want the planning commission to do everything it can to get things done by the end of February, then, then Scott can go back to planning commission and say, this is what the council would like, and, and do what they can do.
Others? Jeff?
Well, and so I end up agreeing both with Dan and Bruce simultaneously, which is that, I mean, it's the, it's the three little bears or whatever, it's, it's gonna be the right amount of time. And I can't say what that is. 90 days does feel too short. All the way to end of June feels too long. So there's something in the middle that's just right. And it might be April, I might say, that, you know, we wanna give the right amount of time. If, if I look at what I thought was the biggest sins of the Town Center process and what's being addressed here, so thank you, Allison, and Scott and everybody, and Evan, all this that's got put into it so far, is number one, the fully scoping issue. And yes, this is a high, is more contained in some ways, and yet more important in other ways because of its impact. But fully scoping this out front and giving us at least something that we, a schedule we can believe in, that the staff believes in and we believe in, is really critically important because it really loses its effectiveness if you try to set it arbitrarily at, I'm gonna say 90 days, and then it just, and then it continues to tumble away, where it's growing in the opposite direction. The second thing is that, the other thing that we learned was, you know, we did as more outreach on the Town Center than we've ever done before, and yet we didn't really get a lot of input from a broad variety. I really, and so if there's places to cut, it might be postcards and public meetings. And these roadshows, I actually think, sound very attractive as a way of going out to large groups of interest group people, and going out to them are having some big public ways of getting input. So I do think the way we did it before did not succeed, roadshows does, and that would take a bit of time. To Wendy's point, the third thing is, one of the things I think was bad in the Town Center process was the lack of visuals. And so I do think that the money in there for graphics is highly valuable because it does, I mean, a picture's worth a thousand words. I think a lot of people, if they'd seen Town Center renderings more, you know, fully fleshed out, would've understood it better. I think we'll redo that, so I'm supportive of that. And then the integration, I would say, make sure that the planning commission, or at least the top people, come to every city council meeting that is going to address this subject, because the lack of the joint commission people present at a lot of our sessions made it sort of ineffective. And so I think, let's make sure we give them a, an, a date that is aggressive but doable, and I'm gonna suggest April as a try. Really work on the roadshows, less worry about postcards and, and, and town halls, really get maybe the same people each time, and a limited set of people, and really do a great job with the graphics.
Benson?
Yeah, obviously, this is a crucial thing that we're doing, and so we, you know, I think one of the council members has already said it, I mean, we have to do it right. And I guess, the only thing I, I would like to see a shorter timeframe, but I guess I also wanna know from staff, what's realistic? And whether or not you have the resources, if we shorten it, if we recommend shortening it, can the planning commission handle this workload? And can the, is there enough people on staff to basically provide the information and support? Do you, do you need any more resources if you're gonna shorten the timeframe?
Mayor, council, Evan Maxim, the planning manager for the city of Mercer Island. To your question, council member Long, the, I think it is possible to shorten it some. The current scope has 17 items for the planning commission to go through as it stands right now. And that, the way we've laid out the, the schedule, we're typically thinking that the planning commission will touch each of those items at least twice during their review cycle, prior to making a final recommendation based upon a consolidated code. Another item that we heard was of concern in the Town Center. When I calculate the number of planning commission meetings we're talking about, we start to just run out of regularly scheduled planning commission meetings with the holidays. If the scoping exercise in the public outreach that we're talking about right now expands our scope further past the 17 items currently on our plate, some of which are very quick changes, but some of which are fairly complicated, you know, realistically, I think we will need more planning commission time. And so that's why we've tried to, to give you a schedule that we think is, is real and meaningful. There is, to some extent, always the option of scheduling more planning commission meetings and throwing more resources at, at the project. I think you sometimes see a diminishing return on how valuable that resource investment becomes to the, the policy deliberation process. We're looking at an ambitious schedule in my mind right now, as it's laid out in your packet. I recognize, this is something where the council has been, been telling me since I got here, that we need to get this done, as council member Grau said, by December was where we started. So I'm, I'm sweating a little bit at this point that we're talking about after December. I also don't wanna overpromise something that I don't think the planning commissioner or your city staff could, could deliver if our scope continues to expand.
So, we, we're obviously
Dave? So, two things strike me. One is when, you know, when Benson brings up, what resources do we need? I mean, we specifically, I think, added Evan's position to address this issue. Is that correct? So now we're talking about, we don't, it's time and resource constraints. So I'm gonna put that in front and center. The other thing, like an Uber point I wanna sort of ask the council to maybe reflect on is, the feedback that I got from a lot of folks during the Town Center process was not that we didn't do enough outreach, it's that we gathered a lot of people's opinions and then didn't regard them in sort of the final code. And I think, I think people have communicated, at least to me, and, you know, Wendy, maybe back me up on this, because the more excited I get about a topic, the less articulate I become. But if we're not gonna, if we're not, don't have a mechanism for really using that public feedback as we develop the code, then I think, no matter how robust the collection process is, it still feels the same way to the public. And I'm wondering how you all, or DSG or anybody's thinking about that and how we're gonna bridge that gap a little differently than we did in Town Center. Jeff Sanderson's raising his hand.
Well, I, go ahead, I'm just thinking, we had, we had time and we had budget and now we have
Well, I can't let that comment go un, sort of addressed in the sense that I think the problem was one of a, that's, you're describing qualitative input, which is really critically important. But then there's the quantitative part, and in particular when we're talking about every resident in Mercer Island, is really, really critical. The fallout, I think, in the Town Center is, yes, we did hear a lot of feedback, but it's still unclear to me what the overall citizens of Mercer Island, the totality of them feel, which only could've been done through quantitative work that before you and I got on this council, I heard was planned to be done and never got done. And so I would say that it's not necessarily a matter of gathering up the written comments that are, you know, from, from groups of people, but taking the proposals that are put together and vetting that in a far more rigorous and quantitative way with, you know, with the group.
Totally agree with you. Completely agree. I would love to see us go down that road. But when I, when we hear planning commissioners say, I know that's, I, I've heard the public say that, but I'm gonna do something contrary to that, that, I think that sends a signal to the public that you don't value my opinion, right? And so that, that's the disconnect that I wanted to address with this one, because we shouldn't be in that same position again. Or we have the public saying, I want 10 trees on every lot, and the planning commissioner, whoever the final recommending body is, saying, we want no trees on every lot, to use an extreme example. So I totally agree with you, I think we should go down that route of more quantitative data collection. But how that, how the results of that data collection, whether it's a town hall, or survey results, or whatever, is codified in the code, I think we need to be conscious about how that, those two things plug together.
I think we're gonna wanna make sure that, uh, planning commission has the autonomy to make decisions as they see fit before it comes to council, at which point the council will make decisions that we see fit. But I, for the moment, what I'd love to do is, is try and get us focused on this time and dollars question, or questions, so that we can try and get, get forward on those. Allison, Evan, you're hearing the council express a desire for faster is better as long as it's done right. I think, I'm trying to, trying to boil down what you guys have said. Can you offer us any sort of advice on, on how to avoid giving you here, direction that you go, wow, that was really stupid? And rather, take what we're giving you now and, and make it useful rather than onerous? I, I'm sorry for not giving you a crisp question here, but I'm looking for, but let's try this. If, if, what I'm looking for is just how hard you say, just how quickly you say, that is just crazy talk, if, if it's April. Or that's crazy talk if it's February. Or that's crazy talk if it's December. Because you're hearing all of those, I think you didn't hear December, actually, but 90 days. Because I'm looking, you know, I, I tried to say, go with what staff recommends, but I'm not getting much love from the council right now on that, so. Scott, you gonna try this one?
Yes, Scott Greenberg, your Development Services Group Director. I'll, I'll, first of all, echo Evan's point, we have 17 items on the scope of work today that could expand after we go through a more robust community engagement process to simply make sure the scope of work is what we should actually be working on. When you start talking about the, you know yourselves how many times you want to see items back. It's rare that on something that might be controversial or affects people's property rights, that the council votes, has one meeting where you hear about the item and then you vote on it and get it off your plate. Planning commission works the same way. So I'm, I'm anticipating we'll, we will be bringing them a completed evaluation sheet for each item. We'll be giving them options to look at. We may or may not have code language written for those options until we get more direction from the planning commission. And then we'll have to come back to them with that code language, or, or, or code language that implements their direction. So you're already talking two meetings. And some of these items maybe can be done in a half hour, 45 minutes, but there are many of them that will take longer than that to discuss. And then the other thing is that it's not just looking at each item individually, it's looking at all these items as a package to make sure that the outcome of the code amendment is actually the outcome that the planning commission and the community, and ultimately the council, will desire. So I, I guess I'm saying, I'm, I am very comfortable with the schedule, I understand and really appreciate the desire to do it faster. My concern is that with all the community engagement that I know the community is going to want, I think it's a mistake to shorten up the schedule. I, I think we will be hearing from the community that, like we did from some in the Town Center, is that the only, you know, the Town Center, we had a moratorium, we were chasing the deadline, we had to get things done. I, that's what we're hearing from the community, is make this a meaningful process, give us time to be educated, give us time to be engaged, and let's do this right so that a, a deadline isn't what's forcing us, or forcing the planning commission and council to make a decision. So that, that would be my two cents on it.
Okay. Debbie and Benson?
Question. You said that, that right now there's 17 items, there's the potential for that list to expand further. Can you, can you help me understand how the planning commission is gonna determine what scope, what body of work? Is it anything that any citizen comes forth with once and it's on the list? Or is there some sense of critical number of votes, or assessment from staff, or a combination of? How, how do we know what the process is for landing the ultimate scope of work?
So I think there's probably at least two, two components to an answer to that question. As far as the public process in front of the planning commission, I think one of the council members, and I, I apologize, I've forgotten who at this point, articulated the need to be clear as to what the planning commission was looking at each planning commission meeting night, and what the, the outcome of that deliberation was. We've started to group the scope of work items, the 17 items we've been alluding to, into essentially four broad categories related to building design, site design, public process related to, you may recall the deviation discussion, trees. There may be a fifth floating around out there somewhere. In terms of helping the Planning Commission get their head around the design standard discussion, I think our intent is to bring these items to the Planning Commission in a way that they can look at related topics. So onsite design, we might be talking about impervious surface, lot coverage, the consolidation of multiple lots into one large lot for development, as a group of topics which are all basically related to each other. I agree with the council member's observation that we need to be clear as to what items are in front of the Planning Commission and how those are being evaluated. Even in what I just described, related to site design, there are four or five different components to site design that the Planning Commission will need to evaluate and make a recommendation to the City Council on, let alone the five different general categories embedded into your 17 work items so far. Meaning that that consolidation piece that Scott was alluding to a moment ago, looking at the whole code amendment altogether, needs its own set of time as far as a response goes. The other part of this process, you may recall back on August 1st when I did my initial presentation of the scope, we were talking about using a policy-based approach to the evaluation of these proposed amendments. And all observed for the planning, or pardon me, for the City Council, the intent of the staff, at least at this point, is to make sure that we look at our comprehensive plan, the public comment, the existing regulations, and try and present a package to the Planning Commission, so they'll have all of those various inputs into the process. Someone may come up with a great idea on how to solve an impervious surface deviation-type problem, to pick on that one. And it may not be something that's already on the staff's radar as a possible solution. I think that idea needs to come out of the public comment, or out of the deliberation and discussion at the Planning Commission stage, or possibly out of part of this community outreach process, and would then be folded into the actual policy evaluation done by, first, of course, the Planning Commission, and then by the City Council. So, two parts. One is kind of trying to break this into manageable chunks for the Planning Commission to evaluate, and the other part is the process itself, where we allow for good public input.
So that's definitely helpful. Sort of a basic question. This list of 17, is that, do we know what those 17 are and that's done? Or is there still a sense that the scope is up for discussion, that then subsequently gets categorized into these different buckets?
The initial 12 items were presented in the Council Agenda Bill on August 1st. I've lost the number off the top of my head. And I believe at that council meeting, the council added an additional five items. Those five items we can certainly provide to the council again, or I could pull them up if provided enough time. I think the community engagement process that we're talking about now, from, and what we've perhaps been talking about for a few weeks now, would allow for additional community input into that scope of 17 items. Council may recall that I made the observation on our, at our August 1st meeting, that there were some areas of residential development standards that are not in our scope of work right now. We're not talking about lighting standards, for example. We're not talking about color. We're not talking about other aspects of subdivision design, if you will. Those could be added through the community engagement process, again, subject to the council's authorization on an expansion of our scope as it stands today.
Okay, so we have, we have the, let's just take a discussion. We have 12 plus 5 plus what would come from the community that fall within sort of a predefined bucket?
Yeah, so the, I'm going to direct the council's attention to the schedule, if I may, in front of you. I think our primary purpose in this Phase 1 green section of the calendar is really probably twofold. One, to build community awareness and interest in the residential development standards update process, trying to get people to come to the Planning Commission meetings around these topics. And two, to look for other items related to residential development standards that are not within our current scope of work. That's why you'll see the bulk of our work in front of the Planning Commission really starts in the yellow section, the Phase 2 section, where we've hopefully at that point nailed our scope of work down, and we can begin to parse out the actual evaluation, first for the Planning Commission and then for the council.
Benson? I just want to say that I really appreciate the comments from the staff, and frankly, they've been consistent. And I'm actually going to support the mayor's position that we stay with the schedules presented by the staff. I think, again, the important thing is to do it right, and even though they're saying that this is an aggressive schedule, it probably is a good balance, but I'm persuaded by the staff, and I think they've made their point quite clear that the scope of work could change. We don't know. We want to engage the public, but we've got to do this right, and I don't want to rush it. And so I'm okay with the schedule as is. But again, the staff has also heard, if they could try to shorten things, all the better. But I say we'll stay where the schedule is presented.
Okay, so I see Jeff nodding too. I think we're close to the schedule stays, but I don't, I guess I'm looking for a thumbs up, thumbs down on that for the moment, unless somebody else wants to comment before we sort of settle on schedule.
I mean, I just simply think that, you know, staff has heard that where possible, without jeopardizing the quality of the process, if you can speed it up, if you see some great opportunities through technology, or eliminating something that isn't super impactful, do it.
Or even magic.
Right, magic. If you have some magic, use some pixie dust or something.
I saw three nods over there.
Yeah, and then I would say, sort of the worst-case scenario then, is the timeline that's been outlined, but, you know, full confidence in your professionalism and competency to look at it and say, "Here's a better way to do it," and it shortens the timeframe. So, yeah.
Okay.
So that's clearly what we're going to do, but I'll second three words that Debbie just said, worst-case scenario. I personally would hate to see staff back before us in a month saying, "We're now into November." I mean, so hopefully that becomes the case.
Okay, so yeah, I'm looking for the motion at this point. Anybody care to make a motion?
Move the 21,500 optional budget requests, which would be funded by the 2015 general fund surplus for graphic development and meeting facilitation, the community engagement plan related to the single-family residential development code update.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay. Motion passes 6-1. Staff, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Councilmembers, good to keep going at this point? All right. Agenda Bill 5217, 990 loss of mobility and negotiation status report. Welcome, Kirsten.
I'm going to need a moment to pull my presentation up, so if you'd like to take a stretch break, I think it might be...
All right, yeah, break. We taking five minutes, or we just taking a couple of minutes?
Two, five.
Two to five. All right, we're in recess for three minutes or four minutes. I'm just looking at the clock. Yeah, too much sitting tonight. I cannot figure out this new operating system. It's driving me crazy. Yeah, I just...
FHWA responded on August 5th stating it is illegal under federal law for any SOV traffic to be in any part of the HOV lanes in spite of the commitments made to Mercer Island by the state and Sound Transit. The city then sent a letter with a formal rebuttal and engaged with electeds at all levels. We hired experts to assist in furthering our positions and discussions are ongoing. The next significant issue is SOV access to I-90 at Island Crest Way. Today, the Island Crest Way entrance to westbound I-90 splits with one lane entering Center Roadway, the other entering general purpose lanes. Prior to the August 5th FHWA letter, the plan was that islander traffic in SOVs could continue to access westbound I-90 from Island Crest Way. But now, it's possible only HOVs could still use the entrance, generating local traffic congestion and backups on other ramps. We're fighting this decision and have proposed a number of policy alternatives to allow continued SOV access. So in summary, the city is providing relentless advocacy. The Mercer Island City Council, along with Sound Transit, is challenging FHWA in the strongest possible terms to find an equitable solution for islanders. We're urging the state and King County to keep the agreements they made with our community. We are also involved in careful sequencing of negotiations. The FHWA situation also complicates our discussions with Sound Transit regarding parking and other mitigation required under the 2004 amendment. Looking forward, the next few months will be challenging. When we started these negotiations with Sound Transit last year, we felt we were making progress addressing the priorities that islanders had expressed to us during the 2015 public input sessions. The recent decision by the FHWA has complicated matters, but we are still engaging to find a solution. As you would have expected, we have already engaged our federal, state, and county representatives, all of whom are supporting our efforts. As negotiations continue, we will keep residents updated. What does this mean for Mercer Island? The closure of the Center Roadway will create some temporary and permanent adjustments for residents, just like the building of the I-90 lid did. We are an inclusive community, building and planning for the future together. While we can't achieve everything we want, we have and will continue to ensure residents' concerns and ideas are voiced at every step of the process. We're happy to -- and then we're happy to open up any meeting that we are at to any questions that the community may have. And if we don't have answers now, we will be sure to get back to you. So next steps. There will be an ongoing outreach to all Mercer Island residents. We are currently scheduled to go to the Chamber of Commerce on November 3rd. We have an invitation to go to the farmer's market on October 9th. We have -- we can go to Rotary as it works into the schedule over the next several weeks or a couple of months. And we are open to speak to the community groups, to any community groups who invite us. We also plan a city-sponsored open house this fall of 2016. And of course, we will be providing regular news updates that we'll share via email, social media, e-newsletter, and our website. So we appreciate the community's past input and will remain open and share as much information as we possibly can throughout. We welcome your comments and will be available to answer any questions you have. And that's the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's been a lot of input and direction trying to pull this together, and so thank you very much for your -- all of your work on it. I think it's -- so we're seeing this for the first time. It's a -- it's clearly going to be something that will evolve over time as we --
Yes.
-- first get some experience at giving it, but more as the information changes and evolves that goes along with our negotiation process. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Anything -- questions for Kirsten? Anything council comments? Certainly could provide feedback to her offline, too, if you want to, you know, lend a voice to any thoughts on that. But Benson, you got something right there?
Yeah, I just, you know, when you reach out to all these various groups, are you also reaching out to the faith communities as well?
Yes, I've sent an email to the Clergy Association to see if they would be interested in a presentation.
Great. Anyone else? All right. Kirsten, thank you very much. All right, we'll move to Agenda Bill 5213, City Council Requests for 2017 Comprehensive Plan Preliminary Docket. Kevin?
Very brief. I'm long-winded by nature, but --
As are we.
Yes. No comments, sir. So the council recalls, of course, that you created a process for preliminary docket -- creating a preliminary docket of comprehensive plan amendments at your last council meeting. The deadline for creating or adding items to that preliminary docket would be October 1st, October 3rd, if we carried it to the next Monday, next workday after October 1st, which happens to fall on Saturday. But this is the only city council meeting between now and that deadline. So the opportunity for the council tonight, of course, is to add anything to the preliminary docket that we want to look at as part of our final docket review process to create our work plan for next year. And unless there are any questions, I'll sit down and listen.
All right, that was brief. Thank you. Council, anything to add? Just for your recollection, we debated kite hill last time.
We okayed it.
We okayed it. We debated -- what was the second one?
This is residential.
That's right, residential code. And yeah, created a placeholder for that. And we debated MICA and did not approve that. So that's where we stand at the moment. Jeff?
It just struck me in reading Carrie's piece on the cellphone towers that there's out-of-date stuff on cellphone or facilities. It seems to me that I would get that addressed and cleaned up in 2017, based on what I read and the impact visually it is.
Is that code or is that comp plan, though?
I thought I read in her document it was a little bit of both.
There were comp plan policies cited in the Agenda Bill, you're right. They were policies in Section 8 of the, I believe it's the communications section of the wireless communication facility section of the comp plan.
So that they were there is different, is sort of separate from question from whether they were --
I'm just asking the question about whether it's appropriate to add anything.
But whether they were somehow out of date or needed work would be a different.
I would defer to the council about whether the council regards them as out of date and needing updating. Just for your reference, it's on page four of the Agenda Bill, and it comes from the city's comprehensive plan, the utilities element. And we cited policies 8.1, 8.3, 8.6, and 8.7, but there are others in that portion of the comprehensive plan. And again, I defer to the council.
So I can't help but ask you, Jeff, so yes, last two weeks ago, when you talked about setting a precedent about doing something for a private party, and now we're talking about doing something for Crown Castle, which they haven't asked for?
No. What I'm referring to is the fact that I'm asking a question of out of ignorance of the stuff we do, that if we have a -- I'm talking about our overall policy in terms of how much and where and how big and is there anything that needs to be addressed in the comp plan in terms of anything? I mean, this is an open-ended comment.
But shouldn't Crown Castle be coming forward with that request, not the city council? I mean, I just, I'm just sort of --
No, no, don't, don't, let's not go to that place. I'm asking if, from a city point of view and our citizens' visibility of the ugliness of cellphone towers, not trying to help Crown Castle or hurt them, you know, if there's nothing to be addressed, I ask Scott, I'd rather ask him in public than email, go there. I'm not trying to help any private entities. I'm trying to help the citizens of Mercer Island avoid ugliness.
I'm not sure there's anything that needs to be addressed right now. We have a rewrite of the cell tower code on our work program for, I think it's 2018, maybe 2019, I can't remember at the moment. So that might be a better time to do it when we have some idea of what a code rewrite might look like and talk about the policy maybe at the same time. So my recommendation would be not to put that on this year's docket.
All right. Sounds like that one's going to quickly die. Anything else? All right, seeing nothing, I'm going to consider this Agenda Bill done. There's no motion needed, right? As long as there's nothing to be added? Great. All right, we're moving on then. Other business. Councilmember absences. There are none tonight. Are there any upcoming we should be aware of? No? All right. Planning schedule. Ma'am?
The only thing I would point out is we do have a number of special meetings coming up here. There are the one on this coming Friday is for the city manager interviews. Then the subsequent Friday is the microplanning session for the budget. And then we have a joint meeting coming up with the school district on October 13th, all the special meetings.
Great.
Oh, if I could add one thing, we do have for every meeting up through the end of October, I believe it is, executive sessions on, and we're going to extend that through the end of the year.
Okay. Councilmembers, anything? Planning schedule-wise? Okay. Board appointments. We have two tonight. So we had standing openings on the Arts Council and the Mercer Island Library Board, and two folks have put their names in for those. Staff has recommended both. You didn't receive the applications or staff recommendations, but I'll tell you that in both cases, staff gave these folks a thumbs up, and I'm therefore forwarding them on to you with my thumbs up. Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
I move to affirm the appointments of Matt Loong to Position 6, expiring May 2020, on the Arts Council, and Tim Ong to Position Number 3, expiring December 2016, on the Mercer Island Library Board.
Second anyone? Okay, moved in second. Did any discussion? Hold on, favor signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Councilmember reports. Benson, you want to start?
Thank you. First of all, I think we owe a great deal of thanks to the chamber and for MyVall and other sponsors for a great event. The Art Uncorked event was attended by almost 500 people. And so I note here, kind of notice from the chamber that they've rescheduled, they scheduled the next one for September 8th, and so put that on your schedule. I was given this as a reminder by Wendy. Our own Chief Holmes, plus Cindy Goodwin and our superintendent Gary Pleno sent out a letter, this is part of the Mercer Island Youth, Mercer Island Healthy Youth Initiative, and basically it's a letter to parents with recommendations on how to basically prevent risks associated with underage substance abuse. So it's just a reminder how important it is for us to be involved in our, the lives of our young people. So anyway, thank you, Chief, for that. I emailed to each one of you folks, sent me information that I received from the Public Issues Committee for the Sound Cities Association, and I sort of left it open. They're looking for thumbs up, thumbs down, some sort of guidance from each member of the PIC, of which we are one. And there were some issues that they wanted, you know, basically what they do is they sort of take a thumbs up, thumbs down, and then they present it to the full SEA board for action. And so some of these issues, I don't know if anybody read my email and the attachments. And if not, we can sort of defer until the next meeting. But it'd be nice to have some direction from the council so that I could take that back to the PIC October meeting, I think on October 12 or 11 or something. So we do have one more meeting. If people haven't had a chance to look at it, I would hope you would take some time. Basically, they're asking for support on whether or not this council supports the low-income housing tax credit expansion that Senator Cantwell is a prime sponsor. There's also questions about whether or not we are in support of some of the major issues that SEA Legislative Committee or their legislative agenda in 2017 will have, including the affordable housing issues and also lifting the 1% property tax limitation and also increasing funding for public health. So it appears to me that maybe we're not in a position to take a thumbs up, thumbs down. So I hope that maybe we can put that on the schedule, maybe for next meeting, to at least get some direction. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you. So putting, I guess, would you resend? I'll confess that I did not read what you sent previously. Maybe if you resend, we can start from there. Okay, thank you. Wendy?
For someone to thank staff and our contractors for Island Crest Way. Repaving, I've gotten lots of thank yous and enjoy driving on that road myself, so kudos to all the staff who are now gone, but I think folks are happy with that project being done and now being awesome. October 2nd is our YFS Open House at Luther Burbank Park from 1 to 4. That's where you can get your hands on those glass pumpkins early before the season. And then finally, I think MI Preschool Association is hosting the first-ever pumpkin walk on the 22nd of October in Pioneer Park. So this is cool, kind of like the Woodland Park Zoo carved pumpkins up and down the trail. Come bring your kids, it'll be a really fun community event, I think. So that's it.
What day is that?
22nd.
All right, great. Thank you. Jeff?
No, we covered Gomai stuff today. Again, double kudos on Island Crest Way. It's a beautiful job and really improves the quality of life on the island. So great job, city, on that.
Debbie?
The only thing that I would be calling out is next week is a GMPC meeting, and I do believe we'll have to be talking again about, more broadly, the growth management planning principles, which should generate some interesting conversation across the region. So that would be my only update.
Yeah?
I attended a meeting of the Regional Policy Committee last week where the issue, primary issue, was the mental illness and drug dependency levy, which is a sales tax levy, which is part of the sales tax, which is imposed by the county and which the county has already decided that they are going to extend for, I think, another seven years. But they have, they've commissioned, they've, the King County Council is going to direct the county executive to do a study to review what changes will be made in the programming for spending that money. And they've got a very ambitious list of projects that they are considering. And it's, it strikes me when I see those projects that I hope Mercer Island is somehow directly engaged in those kinds of discussions because there is a lot of money being spent around the county, and I think we all have sat through the school board meetings and have been told about the drug issues. engaged in those kinds of discussions because there is a lot of money being spent around the county, and I think we all have sat through the school board meetings and have been told about the drug issues in our schools and elsewhere on the island. And I would hope that staff is working with the county on this and making sure that if there are needs on Mercer Island, that some of those funds get allocated to meeting those needs.
Dave?
Just a quick one on utility board meeting last week. Interesting note that the salaries are forecasted to increase from $577,000 to $795,000. That's between 2015 and 2018, and that's primarily because of the two sewer team positions that we added. Of note, there's a proposed rate increase of about 7% per year through 2020, and that's intended to raise, I think Chip talked about that with us previously, raise $2 million toward that Reach 4 project. The totality of the project, I think, is $5 million, but what he's hoping to do is sort of build a fund for that, and then that way we don't have to put the entire burden on utility rates. So half paid by utility rates and then a half paid by a big investment from the council at some point. Reach 4 is the sewer line that goes up near the northeastern corner of the island. Don't test me on my sewer line replacements, guys. It's unfair.
This is a sewer lake line.
This is more Lakeline, yeah. You are not the only ones who date to the previous Lakeline project, but huge. It was, what, a $25 million project or something at the time, and huge. Yeah?
I actually... I have a question. Pam, maybe at our next meeting or in correspondence, it would be great to get an update on the intersection up there on 40th, where we have two lanes and three traffic lights, when that might be a one-to-one ratio, because I know it's still causing some confusion out there. And then I am getting consistent questions in terms of what is the MICA process through the city over the next couple of months? It would be great just to get, here's the sequencing of events, here's current estimated timelines, just so we can get that out there.
We plan to have that for you at the... At least by the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
And with regards to intersection performance around the schools, we've set the agenda for the upcoming Joint School Board Council meeting with two big topics. The first being how the council funds operation, what our taxing authority and abilities are and what the school districts are, as a way to let the organizations compare and contrast what our abilities and where money's flow is. And then, secondly, how's it going with the school year, the construction projects, the safe routes to school, the intersection at 40th and 86th and all these...
And the bus.
And the bus paddles. Yeah. So all of those things, an update. Our fire... Our police chief will be, I think, called into action on that report as well, so...
My designate, Neebwell.
I'm sorry?
My designate, Neebwell.
Very good. Very good. All right. For me, as a report, you know, I kind of got... So I don't have anything else to report, other than that during public comments tonight, I was... Happened to be glancing at this, and this is... This is our council chambers code of conduct, which is what goes into... What has all the appearances information in it. And so under appearances, there is a bullet that is, comments should be addressed to the entire council, not to individual council members, staff members, or the audience. And I think our new... Newly-ninted, or maybe not so new anymore, Council Operations Committee might take up the question of whether we want to... Whether we want the chair to actually try and call that rule out when we have speakers? Because particularly tonight, that rule was not... So I looked at the rule, I looked at the speaker, I said, should I stop this? We haven't historically done it. I'm not going to do it here without some council thought going into it. But I would like this operations committee to contemplate that, maybe offer a recommendation back to the council of whether we get more clear about that and act on it. And of course, then, we'd want to be consistent and do it in a way that's not arbitrary. But I put it out to you because it sort of troubled me that I wasn't quite sure how to handle that. So if we could do that, that would be great. Okay. That's all I've got on that regard. We are going to move now to an executive session. This will be executive session number two, for a period of approximately 60 minutes, to with legal counsel pending... To discuss. The word "discuss" is missing. Ah, there's a word missing there! To discuss with legal counsel pending a potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42301101I. Counsel is not expected to take final action following the executive session.